Give the clerk a handout for you on some household hazardous waste events that the county is sponsoring here in San Andreas and other places. And there's enough for the press, by the way. Would appreciate any advertisements.
Good afternoon.
Oh, we got the important ones here.
So, the State of Public Works Administration. This is the last of the states of the states. My intent after this is to be coming back on a quarterly basis to give you periodic updates on all divisions, all projects, all capital projects, and anything else that any board member wishes me to report on.
I shouldn't have said that.
Hi Kathy.
That's a big lift.
But I don't have to go through the whole thing. So, want to back up one slide? So, we've done transit, equipment service center, roads and bridges operation, development services and surveyor, engineering CIP, integrated waste management, facilities and today's administration. Before I get to administration, I just wanted to let you know that we have currently reviewing the state of, not the state, the short-range transit plan. Once we get comments in and get those revised, then they will be going back to the COG board and to anyone on the Board of Supervisors who wishes to look at it. So, we're anticipating that mid-September. Equipment Service Center, we are actively going out to purchase equipment and update vehicles that were approved in the budget. So, we're moving ahead. We are still fully staffed. That's all very good news. Roads and Bridges Operations, we're moving ahead a little slower than I had hoped on our HBP programs, but we are moving ahead. Development Services Surveyor, we are getting a, an uptick in the number of applications for the resuscitation of former approved subdivisions that want to come in and start construction. And we also see, are seeing a slight increase in single-family dwelling permits. So, that's good. Engineering CIP, we have been working with the COG developing a longer-range CIP program. We also will be talking a little bit more about what we want to do with the CIP program in this presentation, so I don't want to steal my thunder, as it were. Silly. IWM have suggested some significant changes into our operations as part of the final budget. So, that will be coming up for discussion and study sessions as the board needs or the CAO office directs. Facilities, struggling along. We did receive a $10,000 grant from the Calaveras Foundation for beautification and had a meeting with them this week to talk about what it is that they want to see, so we will expend those monies. Acceptance of those monies, and once we solidify the project we want to do, we will bring that in front of you for acceptance.
That was the Calaveras Community Foundation, right?
Okay, so.
He should know that. The Calaveras Community Foundation, that $10,000 grant for, for facilities, that'd be something that, that the paper might be interested in.
Yeah. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you want to call. Okay, so now we're going into administration. Public Works Administration mission statement. We, we haven't had too many mission statements before, but improve, enhance, support all public works divisions, ensuring fiscal accountability and managing all administrative activities. Essentially, without administration, we don't flow. We don't run. The structure of our administration. They've got the Public Works Director on top, below the Public Works Director, supervising position, business administrator. Our Public Works Business Administrator is Kelly Zanhauser. She's sitting right here, for those of you who haven't met her. Below that, direct reports for our Health and Safety Officer, our accounts payable, accounts receivable, timekeeping, administrative assistance, customer service, department capital projects. So, those are actually functions, not people. Those are functions underneath the Public Works Administration, not necessarily people. Okay. And some of our happy staff. I would think that you know a lot of these. Most of them are long-term employees. Our newest employee in the lower-left corner, Ellie, is our Health and Safety Officer. If you haven't met her, she's wonderful.
Jeff, a quick question. She came with credentials, or are we getting credentials, or?
Kelly, want to talk about?
She, she has a degree in health and safety, and she's currently, so this is her first position as Health and Safety Officer.
So, she's not a CIA agent?
No.
All right. You're going to get her that certification?
Yeah, she's working for us.
Great.
And what's a CIA?
Certified Industrial Hydantest.
And how hard is it to get that degree?
She's got most of it done, and if she's, if she's gone through college, she just has to take certification.
For your information, since Ellie's been here, we have come in significantly, what? That's one of the slides. I'm going to let Kelly deal with that later.
All right.
Okay. Department structure, now we're talking more about, I can hardly see that, Kelly. Is it because I'm blind, or we're not focused?
I don't see a difference. Is that light?
I'm not sure that's going to help.
I couldn't tell the difference anyhow. I'm always out of focus.
I can't, I still can't see it. That's okay. I've got it in front of me. Let me read off of my little song sheet. So, under administration, the divisions that we've got in Public Works, roads and bridges, integrated waste management, equipment service center for the vehicles and equipment, facilities, which is mostly maintenance and custodial, both inside and outside of the buildings, here on campus, and our other owned facilities throughout the county. We have transit, and we have engineering. Under engineering, of course, roads and bridges and capital projects, as well as the, the COG project planning and delivery functions.
Sorry.
It's okay.
I was trying to give direction.
Under roads and bridges, of course, we've got development services, Surveyor's Office, and then operations. Operations being our streets and roads and drainage staff. Julie, want to jump up and focus, for heaven's sakes?
I think, I think I was able to.
I'm feeling better about my eyes now.
Goodness gracious, I've gotten so much younger. My arms have gotten shorter. What we do. I'm sorry.
We make people laugh.
Practicing my, I have a new theory for comedy when I retire. It's going to be called Lay Down Comedy. It's going to be all done from a chaise lounge. Okay, what we do. I, I'm going to hand it off to Kelly.
Wow. So, we have the various divisions that you saw on the slide before, and what we do is we handle all the administrative, fiscal, personnel activities for all of those divisions. So, we're running a bunch of mini businesses within the department that have to be managed in some way, whether it's people, money, equipment, we handle all of those activities. Okay. We, on a departmental level, we handle all the timelines and setting goals and priorities for the department. So, the director is involved in every aspect of all of the divisions, as you've seen from the prior split, prior presentations. We review all contracts to make sure that they meet the county purchasing policy, to ensure that the financial and fiscal standards are being met. Depending on what the funding source is, it can vary what the require, how stringent the requirements are. So, it's, it's pretty challenging. We communicate with the outside departments and agencies. For example, we work very closely with the county auditor, we work with the, all of the other departments, the treasurer's office when we receive funds, the CAO's office, to make sure that we're running our businesses according to the correct business model. We ensure proper and timely resolution of office personnel and business issues. So, every day, running an operation like we have, we have to make sure that we're, you know, running the office correctly and handling personnel issues appropriately. So, pretty much just running our business. More of what we do, we, we have, we manage all the hiring processes for the department, all the way from setting up the recruitment with HR, setting the interview panels, reviewing applications, and generating interview questions. Implementation of the capital improvement project program. At the administrative level, we're setting up the financials for all of those projects that you see. So, you see our 16 bridges. We manage all the finances for all those bridges to make sure that we're tracking all the costs, and then we're recovering all the costs, because that's the key to good grant management, is making sure you're getting repaid for the work that you've done. Huge part of our job is preparing the budgets. We have 26 budgets that were prepared in '15, '16, and all the way from something as small as a lighting district this year, we did, all the way up to the CIP, which is multi-million dollars. General administrative support includes management of the staff evaluation program, which is huge. We have, in the past, not done a great job of making sure our employees get their evaluations in a timely fashion. So, the administrative group has taken on that project, and we're making sure that the managers are aware of when those deadlines are, and that they can meet the evaluation deadlines, and let people know how they're doing in their jobs. It's important. Let's see, we process all the Caltrans reimbursable charges for the CIP projects, and those were about $2.5 million last fiscal year. There's more. So, I think Jeff's going to jump back in here, because a lot of what this is, is, you know, as the director, he has to be aware of all the deadlines that are involved with all of these agencies that we have to answer to.
Yeah, last week I attended the ESJPA, which is part of the rural counties subgroup for solid waste, for the rural counties in Sacramento, and it was brutal. I found out there are more agencies that are regulating our operations here in the county than I knew existed. I found out that there are more bills that are coming our way. I found out that our budget in January for solid waste is going to increase by about $33,000 to help fund Cal recycle, to regulate our operations, which is akin to forcing the prisoner to go out to buy the rope that he's going to hang himself with. But, anyway, our integrated waste man.
That positive, huh?
What?
That positive.
It was brutal. Next time I go, do you want to come with me, Chris?
Sure.
I think you would enjoy it. I really do think you would enjoy it.
Sounds like a plan.
It really, for you especially. So, integrated waste management, yeah, it has a lot of overhead, lot, lot of oversight, lot of regulatory. Those regulatory, compliance comes with a cost. We all know that. Our fee structures do not reflect the cost of our regulatory oversight. But as we get better and better handles on our accounting systems, and better and better handles on what it costs us to do our business, we're going to have a better idea of if we are operating in the black or in the red. And if we're not operating in the black, which means no profit, then we can have more discussions about what we're going to do to change that. You guys can read the list of agencies that we have overseeing public works, but rather than bore everybody, let's move on.
Is that all of them?
No.
That's all I could think of off the top of my head.
Yeah. I assume there must be something else. That's only one page.
Hey Kelly, why don't you do this one?
So, some successes over the last year, we've been working on a CIP tracking system and integrating the administrative aspect with the engineering group. And that's a piece that was missing in the past, where we're actually scoping out the projects and seeing if they're fiscally responsible before we decide to move forward on a project. And then feedback loop in providing that information back to the CIP group, so they know where they stand in their budgets on their projects, in addition to tracking all of their contracts with, you know, we have many bridge engineering firms that we are currently working with, and making sure that they understand where they are with those contracts. And it's, it's been a really good marriage of communication, where, you know, I think we're getting a lot of meaningful feedback from that group we met this morning, and I think they're seeing the benefit of it. So, we're going to keep working towards making that system a little bit more robust. The next one, a big one for us, hired a safety officer, and she's actually worked really hard. Did you want to talk about the penalties that she got us out of? No? Okay. Well, we had, we had some findings from Cal, Cal OSHA, and we were facing having to pay, I don't even, over $20,000, it was going to be a good chunk of money for some violation. And she was able to write some letters, make some phone calls, negotiate with them, and I think we got some, they were going to come back and recheck us instead of charging us those, those fines. So, she did a great job.
Question coming. Violations, what, what were the examples of violations?
There was a heat illness prevention violation, not properly shading the work site.
Okay.
And I think that that was, you know, easily resolved. We did some train, additional training, which is supposed to happen on an annual basis for all staff. And I think there was another, they had checked some flagger cards, so our staff has to be trained to be flaggers. And when they asked the staff member for the flagger card, they didn't have it. So, it was a corrective issue.
Any industrial injury?
No.
OSHA violations?
No injuries, no.
Okay.
And so, they came out and actually did a, reviewed all of our properties here in San Andreas predominantly, I think, and wanted, you know, gave us feedback on what needed to be fixed and what, you know, what we could do to avoid any future violations.
Good.
So, she worked directly with them, and, and the staff has been very receptive. She does weekly tailgate meetings with them, and is, she's going, within the next couple of weeks, no, I think next month, she's going to be trained in, she's doing a train the trainer session, where she's going to learn how to teach people how to operate forklifts.
Good.
And so, it's going to be her and one of our foremen from the landfill, and they'll be able to actually perform the training there on-site. So, that'll be beneficial for many years to come. Also, completing law-abusive training, so she's making sure we're up to date with our CPR, bloodborne pathogens, and all of those things that, you know, need to happen on a regular basis that don't happen when you don't have a safety officer. So, we're, we're really happy that she's there. Next one, expanded services and supports to other divisions. Public Works Administration has the flexibility to apply staff where there's shortages in other divisions. So, for example, in the Equipment Service Center, they always had a shortage of administrative staff. When our, when the administrative analyst who works out there wanted to go on vacation, it was really put a burden on the other, the mechanics and the fleet manager. So, we were able to have someone step in and train for a few weeks, and so when she went on vacation, we could, you know, back-end staff. At the landfill, we're, you know, we'll, we'll help coordinate and send road crew out there if needed, working with the road superintendent on that. And transit, we've been helping out a lot with transit, with having a new transit manager out there, doing a lot of the financials and quality control checks for her reporting. It's been very beneficial to both, so, and gives us a little bit more experience doing other things. It was good, and continues to be good. And then, of course, success every year, we, we put together the budget, working with all the various divisions to make sure that that happens on time, and is as accurate as we can possibly get. Those are, I consider to be successes. And then, this section is how we support other divisions, challenges and addressing challenges.
Here we go.
Want to take these?
Yeah. Are you going to bring them all up? Okay, let me do them all at once. Okay, so, challenges, this is nothing near, nothing you haven't heard with other divisions within Public Works, lack of funding, insufficient personnel, and that I put under insufficient personnel, lack of a succession plan, lack of a succession program. I believe that when you have a rural county that doesn't meet salaries and potential benefits of other jurisdictions, we need to build from the bottom up. That's how we fill. And so, we're working real hard on updating our job descriptions, so that we can bring people up through from the bottom up, and we can move the people who may not be perfectly qualified to move up, but mostly qualified to move up and willing to move up. I'd like to be able to move them up with some sort of agreement that additional training and certifications as required could be gotten within a certain period of time, so that I can be filling. We've been relatively unsuccessful. For example, I talked about the Integrated Waste Manager, been trying to recruit and fill that position through the last number of years and a number of recruitments unsuccessfully. So, and that is such a key position, that by not having that position filled, you're either eating into the time and energies of other administrative staff here in the office, deputy director of public works, having to do the job of deputy director of public works and integrated waste manager, eats into other opportunities, other job duties of the deputy director of public works by not having a position filled. So, it's critical. And we're seeing what the priorities are, so we're getting there. Deferred maintenance, you've heard about this all up and down. We've had deferred maintenance, we have had deferred replacement of capital equipment, we've had deferrals on replacement of vehicles. So, we're doing better, and you will see in the final budget that as news came in better than we expected, we've been putting money into capital replacement programs, as well as ongoing funding programs for future capital reserves. So, we're starting to put that into place, specifically for roads and bridges and for integrated waste management. Those are the two divisions that have the highest capital needs for facilities and equipment on an ongoing basis. So, I'm not trying to short-change facilities, but we're working with administration for facilities in terms of long-term capital storage. So, addressing the challenges, we are trying to procure grants whenever they're available, and we can feasibly administer them and execute them, and have the money to pay our match or our fair share. We're generating a future staffing plan whereby we are identifying our succession planning for all levels of the department, not just the upper management levels, but the lower levels. And then, obviously, computerizing the maintenance systems that we've got, more specifically out at the Engineering Service Center, because they act as our coordinator for our equipment, and hoping to get some money for computerized maintenance for facilities within our facilities division. So, you've heard these before, when we went through the Equipment Service Center, when we went through the facilities, aging fleet, equipment replacements plan, protecting the safety of our staff when they're doing their general operations. How do we address it? Good cost-benefit analysis, supporting fleet management, setting up a long-term capital program for replacement, replacing our oldest and highest-used equipment, the ones that are potentially dangerous or are patently illegal. We replace those first, and then we move on down the list. And of course, the implementation and the hiring of the safety officer and having a safety program has been critical. Since I've been here in my now five months, we've got a heat illness prevention program, we've got in place and trained and signed off by employees, we've got a personal protective equipment policy written in place, trained and signed by employees, and we continue to do refreshers as necessary. So, it's all been good, or getting better. So, supporting the Engineering Division, some of you weren't here when I did the Engineering Division, some of you were, but real briefly, the challenges, obviously, our ability to do long-term planning. And long-term planning for the Engineering Division goes into streets and roads, it goes into capital projects that are funded through the COG. It also goes into the capital projects that occur on facilities, and the capital projects that occur around the IWM program. So, how do we, how do we address the challenges of needing long-term planning, fiscal planning, project tracking? That's what we're doing with Public Works Administration. We will be updating the five-year CIP, so that when you see our budget in '16, '17, there will be a division-based capital improvement program that will be looking ahead five years. While we may not be able to fund those, you guys, you guys, I promised myself I wouldn't say that, but I just did. The board will have the ability to look at the five-year CIP, the recommended prioritization that is given to you by administration, and for you to give us input on what you think are the highest priorities according to what you carry back from your constituents. All right? Cash flow reporting and analysis, we are improving that, so our accounting is more push-button and less cranking through a lot of paper. Utilize cost accounting software for project tracking. If you want to hear more about that, Kelly can tell you all there is. Might be kind of tough after lunch. Do you guys want to hear a little bit about our cost accounting software, project tracking? The CASPT? Okay, we'll move to the next slide. Integrated waste, you guys have all heard about it. Challenges, controlling the cost, funding planning, insufficient staff. Nothing else? Regulatory compliance? I've talked ad nauseam, that was the longest presentation I think I gave. For those of you who are here, it was pretty brutal. I'll be real interested in our further discussions as part of final budget with the first phase of corrective action plan for this division. Addressing the challenges, quarterly reporting, updating the five-year CIP, expanding the recruitments, and review the current job descriptions. Public Works Administration oversight to assist IWM in meeting deadlines. There was a significant disconnect in the past between the operations of our Integrated Waste Management Division and our Public Works Administration Division. That no longer occurs. It was creating significant and severe problems for us. I don't know how one can run a major division like Integrated Waste Management without having oversight and assistance from Public Works Administration. Moving on. Roads and bridges, challenges.
Got it all at once, huh? Right there.
What?
Got it all, all at once, right there.
Pretty quick, huh? Efficient. Challenges, loss of funding. We've had some significant loss of funding, that's been countermanded by some savings that we've discovered. Insufficient staff, but we're nearly fully staffed now with roads and bridges for the first time in I don't know how long. Radio communication continues to be a significant issue within the, this division. I have a long-range plan on this, and we can discuss that if you're interested a little bit later. Starting to kick that one into gear. And we do have a very antiquated fleet. But the good news, of course, is as we discovered a little bit of extra money between the June and the final budget, we are starting on the highest-needed, oldest, most dangerous, and least legal equipment that we want to replace, and that's part of the final budget proposal that you will be seeing in the next several weeks. Addressing the challenges, we're trying to identify new funding streams, we're trying to stay current with what the state of legislation is. I don't think that funding for streets and roads and maintenance is really going to flush itself out much before November of 2016. But I think by 2016, we're going to have a pretty good, clear understanding of it. Some of you were able to attend the COG-sponsored funding workshop in, where was that?
Camps, Angels Camp.
Well, the name of that place.
Camps.
It was camps.
Green. Green Horn Creek.
Green Horn Creek. It was pretty interesting, lot of good information, there's, it, it gave a look ahead into the thinking of those legislatures that are actively writing legislation, proposed legislation for the changing of the funding stream. We may very well see by 2016 a fundamental and significant change into the funding for streets and roads, both capital projects that come through the COG, as well as the operations and maintenance within that come directly to the county. And it may not be a sales tax-based funding stream, it may very well end up being a user-based funding stream. Because as our cars have gotten more efficient, and as we are putting more and more of the hybrids and the electric vehicles on the road, that funding stream isn't keeping track, isn't keeping pace with the needs to maintain the streets and roads that we have. Okay? So, where were we? We were working with our county partners to enhance the communication. We were working with our county partners to enhance the communication. Our partners include City of Angels Camp, it includes Forest Service, it includes CDF, it includes our friends and neighbors at the COG and our friends and neighbors down in Stockton at Caltrans to try to improve the open line communications that we get. So when I ask them questions, I get answers, and when they ask me questions, they get answers. Works better that way. And then of course, Public Works Administration has been quite helpful in directing the preparation of the equipment replacement plan for roads and bridges. And then transit, Kelly already spoke to that. Big picture stuff, communication with the community, and that includes COG and our internal reports to Auto-Ter controller, tracking our funding sources, doing a better job, fiscal reporting. You will be seeing a, an update to the operations contract with, with Parat Transit Services, who is our transit operator coming to you, the 25th? I think that's an evening meeting? The 25th?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth?
The 30th is the evening meeting.
Okay, so it will be on the day, will be during, during the daylight hours unless there's more marijuana initiatives. And providing fiscal support to enable the transit manager to promote transit and deliver the capital projects. Okay. There's a word I made up. Holistic management of projects and programs. I didn't want to use it spelled correctly because I didn't think I was going to be quite so organic. Demands of various divisions exceed our available resources, so the question becomes priority. Utilize available resources, get the low-hanging fruit, correct the sins of the past and move ahead into the future with properly transparent programs that are documentable, reportable, accountable and executable. Bunch of ables there. Succession planning, this is, I've been harping on this for a while. If we haven't got a succession plan for everybody in our department, we are not resilient. Technology, we've got to embrace technology and I think the Board will be seeing in the next six months, the incorporation and expansion of GIS with Public Works so that the county can see what kind of a tool it can be and how it can help us to better utilize the limited resources we have. Because the better we can access and utilize the data that we have, the less time we spend researching that stuff. Managing contracts, professional service agreements, RFPs and purchase orders. That's been sketchy in the past. We seem to, in the past, have written a different style of contract for everything we wanted to put under contract, and that makes it very difficult for our friends and neighbors up in the Council's office. We're trying to eliminate that. We are trying to have very, very specific templates that are updated once a year to incorporate current contracting code and public contract code so that we can crank these things out rapidly. I believe that our job is to spend the money that we have with the resources that we have to do it. So it drives me crazy to have projects and funding that have been appropriated and money's given and not delivered. Anyway, providing administrative support to the divisions, Kelly already talked about that, to the ESC, Integrated Waste Transit Division, you know, she didn't list the other two divisions, but that's okay, you know, they, you know, administration gives them support as well. Okay, so implementation of project management programs so that we are managing our programs and our projects consistently across divisions. I think that's pretty important. We're doing some minor reorganizations in the department structure. I've done some of them, you've already approved some of those, you'll see a few more in the final budget, and then as we move on into next year, you'll see a few more. Without changing too much, some minor tweaks I think gives us better efficiencies, better consistency, better transparency and better reporting. Establishing protocols for communication, chain of command, working on all those things to try to make us operate just like a real Public Works Department. Filling the vacancies in IWM and Engineering, we're moving ahead. Hopefully we'll have our senior engineer interviews within the next several weeks and be able to fill that position. Cross-training, that's really important to me. I'm trying to get all of my junior engineers trained to one day potentially take the reins from the old guys and the old girls. So we're working on it. Continue to work with IT and the ACO to explore IFAS CAMs interfaces. Boy, I can't even pronounce it, let alone run IFAS or CAMs. I've got it down enough to be able to push my budget items through. I can't touch CAMs, I'm afraid to touch it. Kelly gives me paper, that's safest on the CAMs. That's our reporting system, that's our accounting and management reporting system for Public Works. It's a pretty, it's a very robust system, gives us very, very good tracking. So more of this, I hope you guys aren't falling asleep, I hope you didn't have too big of a lunch wherever I was. Standardized format, streamlined processes. So I've talked about that a lot. Also utilizing part-time administration positions approved for the Equipment Service Center, that's part of our, our hopeful succession plan out there at the Equipment Service Center so that we can get that administrative position trained and ready to go before we lose our current administrator. Assist with implementation of vision and programs, expand the safety program, improve public outreach, revise organization chart, accurately reflect what we're actually doing in our staffing, 100% evaluations every year, and then a time study for cost allocation. So more accurate reporting of how we're spending our time. I've been doing that aggressively because as I spend time doing work on the bridge replacement program, those are reportable and reimbursable hours. So instead of that money supporting my salary coming out of general fund, it's coming out of the programs and the grants that we have already got executed as legitimate funding streams. So I think it's important not only for me at the top of the department, but everybody throughout the department. What's next?
There's no coding for that?
There's no what?
Like a coding mechanism for it?
Yes, there is. But one has to.
Through CAM?
One has, yes, it is through CAMs.
I understand that.
Okay. But it also, Supervisor Chris Edson, it also has to be a priority with the staff. And if I don't have the knowledge of how important it is that we accurately reflect what we're spending our time on. In other words, if somebody thinks it's busy work, you know, they'll report it any way they want to report it. If they actually think that, hey, wait, I'm saving the county money because my hours are reportable and reimbursable from outside funding sources, that gives the county more money out of general fund to hopefully support those unfunded divisions such as facilities. So anyway.
Not to mention it is the correct way to report.
That too.
Right?
So we want to implement department-wide quarterly status updates to the Board, so if there's anything you want on your quarterly reports, you let me know and I'll be sure to bring it up. I will be bringing up things such as the status of projects that are in construction or have been completed. Just for grins, SR 261226 is in construction and moving along at a clipping pace, and the Red Hill Slide Repair is complete. So moving on. Completion of the bridge and capital projects, improvements to operations of Integrated Waste Management Division for efficiency, maximum efficiency out there. Creation of capital equipment replacement funds and facility improvement funds. So this is the way we think we should be working and this is what we're working on. If I'm wrong, let me know. Questions?
Thanks for the report. I really like the five-year CIP plan. I think that's really critical, so I'm glad to see that moving forward.
Thank you.
I too thank you. I think all of these reports in the various divisions has been most helpful and know that you're operating currently with underfunded and various mandates and all of that. So I also want to know or share that last week I had the opportunity to go with Jeff and tour District Four and look at a variety of Public Works projects, both ongoing and things that need to get done and things that had been done, and it was a very good informative tour and an opportunity to hear more directly on some of the challenges that Public Works has throughout the county.
And I learned more in one day driving around with Supervisor Ponte in her district than I have in five months on her district. Kind of helped coalesce it. So if any of the other supervisors would have the time and allow me to do a drive-along with them, I would love to give a day at least for each one of them. It would help me a lot because you can give me knowledge that you have that I don't have that will enable me to better implement my programs, meeting the needs of your districts.
Just waiting for you to broke in there, Jeff.
I'm broke.
Well, I'll tell you, from, for the last five months, comparing this to what we've seen in our past history with the organization and the implementation of programs that you've done, and of course, Public Works, I'm very impressed.
Thank you.
I think it's a working formulation that we needed sorely, and I think we're going to continue and be where we need to be plus some.
All right, thank you very much.
So Jeff, my turn, isn't it? I was waiting for Chris.
No, you do.
Chris, your turn.
Thank you.
All right, okay, I'll go. So want to thank you for 1226. You listened, and the barrier, working behind that barrier now is great. That really helps with the traffic. I mean, the traffic's going to be the way it is, but, but it's really not much different than it was before, you know, before all of that was going on. So it really made a big difference, and I appreciate that. I heard from quite a few folks that, thank you for that. Gillum Road, I, what can I say about Gillum Road? You went out there and something that has been going on for quite a few years, and the Abrams are pleased, and you know, you found, you gave them a short-term and long-term goals, I guess, or a plan. That's all they were asking for is a plan. And you know, I've been trying for a couple of years to get that plan, and I mean, just took one or two quick visits and, a lot of times it doesn't take a lot. The 26 Safety Improvement Program, that was, that was real, got really lively there for a little while, and it was great to sit in that meeting with you and the property owners and the folks there and, and Caltrans and bring it all together. And that worked really well. So Steve was there, Supervisor Kearney was there too, and that, that's the kind of communication that, that we've been missing, and I'm really happy that you bring that to the table. And I had a really great time, went out and looking at Forward Landfill with, with you and staff, and who else went with us?
We had Mary Pito from the Rural Counties, what, Minnesota.
Yeah, so, big operation, right? We could fit our whole county in that operation, I think, but, but it was really interesting in their processes and what they were doing, and I think that he probably took quite a bit back from that too. So that was really great. And also want to thank you for the realignment strategy that we haven't talked about completely yet, but I know it's on your mind because, because you're the one that told me about realignment, so, right?
Okay.
On 26 realignment, you know what I'm talking about.
I do.
So there's a lot of things that I see that are, I appreciate the reports. I like the fact that, that there are processes in place to be able to access all this information. And, and I think that you're identifying some areas and probably already have that, you know, the money trail, the, the idea of accountability and transparency is, is key. And I don't hear the rumblings I used to hear. So, great man, all in five months, pretty cool. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks to your staff.
I thank them every day.
Any public comments on, on the presentation?
Yes, I, Bonnie Newman from Double Springs, I had three questions. I saw a number go by and I think it said like 27 million, is that what your department is responsible for?
Yes, it's a little bit, is this on?
Yeah.
It's a little misleading because the 27 million includes the capital projects that have been programmed through the COG and Caltrans, and some of those are very high-dollar projects. So if you have an expectation that Public Works is administering somewhere in the neighborhood of $27 million annually, it's not true. A lot of that is ongoing in their five-year programs or seven-year projects. And so in terms of actual budget, what we're doing is our portion of the general fund, I don't know, probably about 14 million. About half of that is going to be capital coming from other funding sources, and the other half is internal. Was that the nature of your question?
Yes, yes. I wanted to know what it was in comparison to the, the total budget of the county.
So 13.7 million dollars is the CIP, which would be best-case scenario if we built multiple bridges in one year, or for example, 1226 is a Canadian, $1.4 million construction project. So that's if everything got lined up correctly and you were able to do the work and get raindrops, it would be about 14 million.
Is it sounded like maybe a quarter of all our money is going, so I just wanted to...
Oh, yeah. It's not general fund.
I know, I don't retain all the numbers all the time, so I'm just...
Just so you know, it's not general fund dollars. Integrated Waste Money goes towards Integrated Waste Road Fund money, which is, has a small component of vehicle license fee, but the majority of it is the gas tax funding and then all the grant programs which come into the CIP.
Then this isn't really for you, it's just, when we're talking about a Calaveras having a $100 million budget, is that general fund money that we're talking, that's all?
That's all divisions.
Okay, then you don't need to explain what, because it'll be too complicated for me to understand.
Me too.
We'll be talking about it again on September 8th, Bonnie.
Okay, then I had a question. Mr. White replaces who?
Mr. Crowitz.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Crowitz.
Pardon?
Mr. Crowitz.
Me, I'm Crowitz.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There's two department heads with first name Jeff. Jeff White is Building Department.
Okay.
And I'm Jeff Crowitz on Public Works, and I replaced Interim Director Robert Packenger, who is now Deputy Director.
And who was before Robert Packenger?
I don't know.
Mike Miller?
Mike Miller?
Yeah, he was also interim.
And then Tom Garcia was before that.
That was the name I was trying to get back to. Okay, glad you're here. Glad he's not. My question was really interesting, you talked about Gillum Road. What happened on Gillum Road that I missed?
Well, you know, they, they've been having issues with the road, like it floods out in the wintertime.
Yeah, and you can't get the big trucks.
The Abrams been complaining a long time about the road, its condition and the fact that we haven't been able to do the right kind of maintenance on there. So they, so they put shotrock down on that road for...
They what?
Put shotrock on that road to stop the...
Runoff.
Erosion, basically. And it's tearing up the vehicles, not only that, but it also, the emergency vehicles don't like going back there because it, you know, costs them more money for tires and things. And so there was really never, I, I used to get calls from some of the folks that live back there, and so I talked Jeff into going out and meet with them, and, and all they really wanted was not, you know, they know the county's having a tough time, really. Broke is good work, yeah. And so, but, but all they wanted was a, you know, a plan. So Jeff laid out a short-term plan and a long-term plan for them, and that just...
Made them happy.
Made all the difference in the world.
Great. Great. Then I had a question, because you're talking about Gillum Road. We had a request on Double Springs many years ago to, after the county came and put in new, a new road, new overlay and buildup, you know, new fill along the road and we got a whole bunch of new weeds and we asked, could somebody please spray these weeds that never lived on our street before and are now here? And in 2009, we were told that we can't spray Double Springs because of the frog habitat. Okay? Well, this summer, earlier this summer, someone went down Gillum Road and sprayed both sides of Gillum Road and that's right on the creek. So how can you get away with spraying Gillum Road, hitting the creek bed and not Double Springs? So I'm just curious of how that happened or why it happened now and why it couldn't have happened back then before all those purple thistles had a chance to, you know, cover our entire neighborhood. And just to let you know, all of us, I'll call myself a local rancher, we went into our sheds and got whatever outdated pesticide and herbicide we had and we went and spread our own damn road and killed whatever was there that was causing us problems. And I'm sure it wasn't ecologically, you know, approved of anyway, but we, we were overcome with purple thistles that were four or five feet high that never grew there before. And then yet this summer, y'all went down Gillum and sprayed the creek bed. I just don't understand.
I can explain.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Part of the history of Gillum, as well as history of Double Springs, is that they're jurisdictional wetlands, as recognized by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And part of the community relations problems we were having out on Gillum Road had to do with the conflict between jurisdictional wetlands and the ability to maintain and operate a county road where you have jurisdictional wetlands on both sides. And by jurisdictional wetlands, I mean that they are wetlands capable of supporting an endangered species, okay? And so 2010, I couldn't spray. If I was here, I wouldn't have sprayed because it was so wet and there was so much water and we would have frogs or amphibious species. 2015, it's completely dry. There's not a green spot along Gillum Road. So this is a perfect opportunity to take care of the weeds in the least expensive and the least environmentally obtrusive way as possible. So we took advantage of the drought where we could. So in wet years, we can't always spray on county roads. In very, very dry years, we can. So that's part of what we live with, that our overhead is, because we live in Calaveras County.
Real concerned about the frogs out there at one point. You know, we used to have a lot of frogs out in that area and then they disappeared about 20 years ago. Then all of a sudden, there was a miracle frog that appeared. You heard the story of the miracle frog?
Yeah.
Okay. It was a miracle and it's gone now because the miracle couldn't be replenished. You know, you get one miracle and then you got, people start watching that miracle? Would you like to comment on that? Or I could.
Unfortunately, Bonnie, I know what you mean by miracle frogs.
Yeah.
But to tell you the truth, you know, I'm an avid backpacker. I backpack, I've been backpacking up in desolation wilderness for probably close to 50 years. And April of 2014, there were three brand-new frog species that got listed as endangered. The yellow-legged frog, this here Nevada yellow-legged frog, two of them.
Yosemite toad.
Yeah. The toad doesn't live up there. But I'd gone up there for 35 years and never seen a yellow-legged frog. In 2011, I went up and they were everywhere. They were everywhere. So I'm convinced that frogs are dehydratable creatures. Okay? And so, but it doesn't matter whether the frogs are there or not. The finding of the United States Fish and Wildlife Service says that if you have habitat that's capable of supporting an endangered species, we must protect that habitat, not just the species that can live there. So in spite of the fact that bullfrogs like red-legged frogs best for dinner, where you have bullfrogs, you don't have red-legged frogs, it doesn't matter. If the habitat in which the bullfrogs live are capable of supporting red-legged frogs, we must protect that habitat. So miracle frogs notwithstanding, we have a responsibility to protect the habitat.
Is that federal?
That's federal.
Thank you.
Well, not all federal stuff is followed. All right.
He can add wolves to it now. I believe you're going to have wolves in the county. You heard about that, right? Okay.
Trinity. Who's Trinity County, Peter?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's going to happen here then. There's a lot of wolves around here. I got a question and I apologize if you guys already discussed it. He wants to take care of waste, solid waste. Wonderful. Taxpayers also paying CCWD for administering, taking care of solid waste. That's got to be straightened out because your constituents in their property tax pay CCWD to take care of solid waste? And this organization takes solid waste? Someplace along the line, I hope you reexamine this whole damn situation. I know it's a turf war, justifying, everybody wants to take care of it, but there's so much bull in there.
Probably agenda 21.
What?
Probably agenda 21.
Hey, there's enough bull, man, over there also. And it's not dried yet either.
It's huge, didn't it?
So it would be nice to get that thing straightened out one of these days, whatever it's, it hits. Go back and reexamine because it's a board of supervisors created at Monstra City called CCWD. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comments? Okay, any board comments further? No? All right. Thank you very, thank you very much for your report. We appreciate it. All right, let's move on to board member announcements. Anybody want to go first? Mike?
I'll go first. Personal note, I'm continuing to improve. I've been able to advance my recuperation schedule, so I won't be required to attend those daily medical treatments, so back on the saddle and ready to go. I did attend a Central Sierra Economic Development Committee meeting in Toowalamie County in Sonora and was able to pick up some information that we can use in our county, especially in the Arnold area and Angels Camp area. They've developed new business supporting classes that'll help our existing businesses on the administration of businesses. They are coming up with a new schedule for next year. These classes will be held in November and they'll be held in Angels Camp. So that's kind of exciting for us. We got a pretty good explanation of where these funds were coming from and how they're dispersed. More importantly, now we have more input of what happens in Calaveras County, even though it's a four-county GPA. I did attend yesterday the Central Sierra Child Support Meeting in Bear Valley. In that meeting, we discussed new changes that they're doing and I was quite impressed with their new employee evaluation form, which I will be talking with CEO and Assistant CEO, producing that for their use should we have a need for in our county. They are revamping their schedule as far as their operations go. They have some concerns about some upcoming negotiation items that we're probably going to be facing in our county, too, like every other county. I will be attending the California Taxpayers, Calaveras County Taxpayer Association barbecue making presentation on behalf of the board at the request of Al Segala. That'll be on Saturday. About it, it's been a busy day, been a busy week. I am, I am very happy to say I'm back in the saddle, so.
Excuse me for motorcycles or motorcycles?
Haven't gone on the motorcycle yet. We haven't determined that yet, but hopefully next week the dog will get me off the cane. I think that's good, so.
At least you smell good.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have to thank Bonnie. She reckoned, I'm kind of an old guy and I'm kind of an old traditionist, so I wear brood, as it's called, shaving after shave. And she presented me with my own brood bar of soap, so.
Is that a hint?
Thank you.
Is that a compliment or a insult?
No, this is, this is a compliment.
It's recognition.
It's a recognition.
From one old guy to another.
From one old guy to another, that's true. Thank you, Bonnie.
Okay, Debbie?
I, like Mike, attended the Central Sierra Child Support Agency meeting in Bear Valley. This is a JPA representing four counties and we rotate locations. We're in negotiations in regards to MOUs and such with the agency. The agency continues to do well and operating within the top 5% in California in regards to collections and is close to hitting a $10 million goal that the agency has for collections. So doing a very good job overall. Attended the EMS meeting. This, too, is a JPA representing several counties. Probably a year and a half, two years ago, we were asked, or through EMS, asked to develop what we call a mid-level practitioner in the field. This is between an EMS and paramedic rank. And the agency was able to put together a program with the medical director and working in conjunction with Mark Twain Medical Center. And they had their first class starting in March, April. It's a very difficult class. There's a lot of the theory and learning and then they go out and do their practical, both at Mark Twain and in the ambulance. Started with something like 20 some odd people and 12 were successful in completing the classroom part of it. And then fire season was upon us. Most of these folks are volunteer within the fire department structure in our county. And so the program is a little bit on hold, you might say, with their clinical time, but they plan to, to pick that up in the fall. So I was very pleased because this was something that was brought to us from, I believe, the Fire Chief Association and others. And EMS responded. We are kind of the first in California to pursue something like this and kind of a role model for perhaps others to follow. They are now in the process of kind of waiting for fire season to get the clinical time done for these folks and trying to assist them along the way in receiving this certification. So I have asked them that when we have our graduates, I think it would be most appropriate to have some sort of recognition ceremony here at one of our board meetings because it's a pretty much big deal for volunteers and such at this level. Next Monday, there's an IHSS meeting that I'll be attending and a COG meeting on September 2nd. As I mentioned earlier, I had an opportunity to tour District 4 and look at a variety of projects and service areas and found it to be very helpful to have that one-to-one time with Public Works and talking about these areas and kind of our strengths and weaknesses and this sort of thing. So I would encourage others to do the same thing. And that's all I have.
I had a couple of special district meetings here with representatives in special districts and District 2, Fire District in West Point, as well as a Vets Memorial District in West Point. Resolved one of the, some of the issues with the, hopefully all the issues with the West Point Fire District and still working on the Memorial District issues, but I'd like to thank Rebecca Cowan, the auditor, and Shirley Ryan, who sat in on the West Point Fire District meeting as well, to help, you know, the communication work. And so that was, that was a good productive, some good productive meetings. Yesterday, I attended the Mariposa, Calaveras Community Action Agency meeting in Mariposa. If, if you ever get the chance, there's a, they have built the prettiest-looking human health building you will ever see. I mean, it looks like they took the idea of lodges in Yosemite and moved it to Mariposa. I mean, it really, if you're going to build a public building, that's, that's the way to do it. It's pretty remarkable. And during that meeting, there was a lot of discussion, but you okay there?
Yeah, just fine. Guess they shouldn't lean on that.
So one of the things that I've been really concerned about is the die-off of trees in my district and it's happening throughout Sierra Nevada because of the extended drought and the beetle infestation and a lot of other reasons, but you have a lot of dead trees and it's becoming a real problem for health and safety, you know, concerns throughout my district, the county and the entire region and probably the entire state at some point. And one of the supervisors in Mariposa, Rosemary Smallcom, has started to address that in Mariposa County. She formed a, the board formed a committee to look at that and make recommendations on how to help landowners, you know, deal with this public health and safety problem. So if we could put that on the agenda for an upcoming board meeting and have a discussion around that, that would be, that'd be great enough if you guys would be willing to do that.
I would be very interested to do that. We share that same problem. I've done some research and unfortunately, the drought condition has increased the bark beetle infestation. Instead of one tree in a group of five, now we're getting six or seven trees that they're attacking and it's becoming a very serious, serious problem in my district, such as Chris's district.
Yeah. So I don't know when we can put that on the agenda. September?
Probably, it would be towards the end of September.
Okay. So second meeting, September?
Second or the evening meeting.
The evening, that's fine.
Live meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be great. People could attend that one.
Let's go for the night meeting. That'd be good. Okay, thanks. And I'll be attending the Fishing Game Commission meeting here tomorrow night.
All right. So I don't have too much this time. Attended the Solid Waste Task Force meeting on the 17th in place of Supervisor Kearney and it was a good, long meeting. But, but, but it's nice to know that there's planning going on, you know, looking at open, out-of-the-box thinking and also including all of the vendors that we have. So it was really, it was actually, not everybody heard what they wanted to hear, but, you know, everybody knows that we're, that we're thinking about everything, so appreciate that. 18th was Agenda Review. That's normal stuff, right? 15 minutes turns into three hours, that sort of thing.
It's normal.
Yeah. So the 20th, I attended Executive Chamber and then after that, the Chamber meeting. And so they have a couple of things that they're, that they're doing besides, you know, they've identified exactly what a chamber is supposed to do. So there's, Stacy Johnston went to the statewide Chamber meeting or conference, whatever you want to call it. And there was a great eye-opener for them so that there's no redundancy or no wasted time on what a chamber is supposed to do because they pretty much got it identified. And what's really cool about that is, you know, the chamber is our, one of our business advocates and supporting businesses and supporting, helping to highlight the businesses in the county and countywide, which is really important, so. And I think they're doing a really great job at that. One of the things they decided to, they chose to help with is the Calaveras Has Talent, which is the semifinals, by the way, are this Saturday at the Fairgrounds. And one of the goals is to try to set up a, for the winner, the adult winner, is to try, try to set up a tour of Calaveras, per se. So you have a lot of cottage industries here... So you have a lot of cottage industries here, and they have, you know, venues all year long. Chamber has venues, the wineries, some of the wineries have venues, and so on and so forth. And there's probably eight or ten different venues that, the goal is, is to hire the winner of the adult category to run that, so they can have a tour of Calaveras. Well, our county, a big part of our county, is that cottage industry. And a big part of that cottage industry is the arts and the music, and the things that attract people here. And so this, this is a really good succession plan, and within, so we can grow within. So now we have, you know, we can, we can develop the program to grow our own industry, and music, and that sort of thing, which I think is a pretty great, great idea. For the kids, the goal is, because there's gonna be another category for kids, the goal is to set up a tour within the schools to have, when they have, like, what do you call those things?
Assembly.
Rallies and assemblies, things like that. And they could have the kids go perform there. And that is pretty exciting, because that also gets kids involved at a very young age, and here we are with our succession planning. Of course, there's, trying to figure out what to do with the Yoyo people, and there's a couple of those folks too. That's pretty cool stuff. Then after that, on the same day, was the, I went to Oak Shadows, and they asked me to come and speak to their group. There's about thirty of those folks, and had a really great time there. They had an ice cream social, and I, I got to speak as long as the ice cream was cold. When the ice cream started warming up a little bit, I was done. They made me sure, they made it sure of that.
That's good.
Yeah. It was good ice cream. Twenty-fourth was a meeting in Calaveras Has Talent. Twenty-fifth, that's today, I'll be darned. So we have our meeting today. Then there's, at four o'clock, Trenton Herring is having a fundraiser in Valley Springs at Eddie's. Trenton Herring is a seventeen-year-old high school student, athletic guy, that got cancer. He got a tumor, and it wrapped around in his brain somehow. And so he was at UC Davis, and, and they operated, took the tumor out. They got like ninety-five percent of it out, and he'd lost all functions of his hands. He couldn't speak, he couldn't walk, and, and they went back and looked, and they can't find another five percent, it's gone. So he came back a few days ago to home. I've been contacting him once in a while. And so they're gonna have a fundraiser for him and his family tonight, because it costs a fortune, you know, for all these medical expenses. And Eddie's is putting on a spaghetti dinner in support of his family, and then a lot of the community has gotten together and donated different things, so that it can be a real good fundraiser for him and his family. So if you have the time, it'd be a really great social event, and a good way to support his family. And then also, at four o'clock, I am meeting with Calaveras Community Engagement. That's through the high school, and that's a community engagement program that the high school has, where they have a website that the high school students can log on to, create a profile, and on there are opportunities for them to engage in the community or volunteer. They can record that experience on the website, and record the hours, and when they're seniors and they, and they graduate, they can have an accurate printout of what they've done over their high school career, which is good for their transcripts and their applications and things like that. They've had this program for a couple of years, but it's been kind of idle. So Stacy Johnson and I have gotten involved in it. We're kind of pushing it in a direction that's uncomfortable for them, because I think it should be a mandatory program, actually. I'd like to see it develop into something where, where the students get an actual experience of their whole community, which includes government, and, which includes community service, government, and the private sector jobs, and, you know, everything within our community. So, but, you know, there's a little bit of pushback on that one. The twenty-sixth, McClintock is having a town hall in Ione, and I'll be attending that, along with Supervisor Olivera.
What time is that?
I don't know what time it is yet. It's evening?
It's six.
Six o'clock? Okay, six o'clock. And then, and then this weekend is the semifinals again, Calaveras Has Talent at the Fairgrounds. So if you can show up, this is a, this is one of the projects of the calaverasyouth.org, and that was formed to basically support music and arts, mostly music within the county of Calaveras County. So if you show up and you pay your way to get in, then you're supporting music within the county, the whole county, not just the side of it. And I will be performing there on that night, to give my, I'll give the performance of my life there, I'll tell you.
Is that the finals?
That's a quarter, or semifinal.
Semifinal.
Next one is the final.
What date is the finals?
October tenth.
October tenth, okay. And where's that gonna be at?
Well, we're thinking it's gonna be at the Fairgrounds.
Okay.
So that's all I have. Want to thank everybody for coming today. Appreciate it.
Just a reminder, budget hearings are September eighth. I don't have any hearings.
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Thank you.
Nice question.
Go ahead, Bonnie.
Chris, you mentioned community action. Didn't we miss our chance to get into community action agency back in the eighties? Are we a member now?
We, we have been. Yeah, it's the Mariposa, Calaveras-Mariposa Community Action. There's the Amador-Toowalemie, and there's the Calaveras and Mariposa, and they're separate.
Oh, one more thing. I went to Angels Camp, and to their board, their council meeting, and I, Dennis Mills came with me, and so did Bob Dean, and to give a presentation on RCD, and asked them, you know, to participate if they would like to. So I'm hopeful that they'll consider that.
When are we bringing that back?
Twenty-second of September. And it'll be a study session on the twenty-second of September here.
Yes.
Sure.
Okay. Twenty-ninth, and Al Segala's having his meeting, barbecue and recognition. We also having a little get-together in the General and Fire District, no cost, everybody's invited, and this organization, non-sponsored by any outsiders, Caltrans or any nonprofit organization, and we're gonna have the same guests as Al has, but no food, just talk, roundabout talk, and that's gonna be, we like to take it as a start, and we will have more get-together on that side of the county.
Yeah.
And we like to get involved, the five, one, two, and so on, you know? If anybody wants to honor us from any of the fourth and fifth district, they're more than welcome. No cost. So if you live on a lean side financially, you're more than welcome to come down to General and Fire District.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome, sir.
Can I add a quick plug?
Go ahead.
Okay. Just a reminder that September the third, six o'clock, at the Angels Firehouse, the Highway Four Corridor Committee meeting will be taking place, and it is expanding. We personally went to the Farm Bureau to invite them, and they're going to be there, along with the Line Grape Alliance will be present.
Great.
And I asked the people from eight-one-one, Call Before You Dig, regarding them coming to participate, and possibly helping to enhance GIS with utilities. And they're seeing a need, because there's places in Calaveras County where PG&E has been called, and they're off by as much as seventy feet in their decision. So, surprise! But if Debbie or Michael can't make it, maybe one of the other supervisors would be able to spend the time to be with us on that evening. It's at the Angels, the Old Angels Firehouse.
Right. What time, again, Dennis?
Six PM on the third, Thursday the third. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna adjourn into closed session.